On that?
I'm not agreeing to that, but.
Do we have enough people agreeing to that?
Is that acceptable, Nancy?
Yeah, if we can, if it's, if it's, if we can make it work and there's no, there's no issues with, traffic or potential accidents, I, oh.
It's a busy street. It is a busy, busy.
It's a busy street and the one-way roads throw people for a total loop.
You know, I, between the parking on Reddit and, and the prospect of parking at the site of the, of the library, that's a lot of parking.
And I also like Kim's suggestion of doing the diagonal parking on the side. Take out the fence and use diagonal parking there.
Well, but I, do we have at least three people who are, who will let us put that in the package or not? If it's engineering feasible?
The diagonal on Shreve, on one side of Shreve.
On one side of Shreve?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, now what about diagonal parking on the side where we have parallel on the north side?
That's out.
Why?
This, the other side of Shreve is out?
Yes, I'm talking about the other side of the Impact Building.
It's actually shown as.
That's a par. Parallel.
Three, five, and five.
And that's not much parking there. If you put the diagonal, you get a lot more parking in there.
We can look at it.
Would that be agreeable? Yes, okay.
I mean, again, it's a big, deep swale there, so, I mean, it might not be.
We can look at it.
Okay.
Just make it work.
We're trying, right?
Let's just squeeze 200 parking places into 100. No, we, we, we will make work, we will present whatever we possibly can, and I, Howard, I appreciate you trying to coalesce that, that understanding of what it is we're trying to do into a proposal to get back to them.
I mean, we want them to come, we want them to feel welcome, and we want them to have places to park, so.
There's also the house down there on, hmm, might belong to Kim, we want parking in front of, no, I'm teasing.
I could turn my, my house into a parking lot.
There you go.
Tom, do you need anything else from us?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, to wrap up the sales tax discussion, we're going to get an answer as to whether or not we can maybe take out a loan and do some of the Harbor Walk, other parts of the Harbor Walk ahead of time. But, can we get at least approval of the six-year program? Because we want to get started this afternoon.
Move approval, second. We have a motion to approve the six-year plan as a, basically a tentative plan, but this next year, 2015, is definitely a go. Is that what I understand from everyone?
Yes.
That's the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One.
No, I'm aye.
Aye, okay, so it's unanimous.
Yeah, the rest we can always, we've done it before, we can move some here, move some there.
Well, and if something wonderful comes up, I mean, it's not like we can't be flexible.
If I may clarify, then, at your first meeting in December, we will bring back an appropriation to you for the fiscal year 2015 projects. So, you'll see two at that meeting. We'll have our annual reappropriation of incomplete projects from 2014, and we'll have the new revenue, the new 1% revenue, that we expect in 2015, and the projects that you've just identified.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, Sean. All right, what have we, did we skip something else?
We got one more.
The housing issue, and that is 7A. And.
Okay.
Which is very important.
Thank you, Tom.
Good morning, Lorraine Helber, the Executive Director of the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. Thank you for approving the Verandah Site Plan this morning. It's been such an uphill battle getting the financial package together for this project, and this is truly a red-letter day for us. We expect to break dirt the first of next year.
Wonderful.
I'm here today, though, to ask for your continued support. You've always been supportive of our efforts at the Housing Authority and our project, but we're asking today for your financial support of the Verandah's Phase Two. That will be the final phase of the senior apartments that we need to build to replace those we lost 10 years ago in Hurricane Charlie. We're asking you for, for your fiscal year 2015 ship allocation of $80,623. We're asking for that because we have the opportunity to, to apply for tax credits. And tax credits are very competitive. In order to win those tax credits, you need to have a large local contribution. The tax credits can provide almost 80% of the construction budget, so they are essential for any housing authority in order to build. In order for the city to make this commitment, they need to ask the county to use that $80,623 for the Verandah's project. They have already committed $20,000, but that's not enough for our tax credit project to be competitive. We can get in the front door, but after that, that's as far as we'd go. We wouldn't compete with anybody. It would probably be a waste of the $3,000 application fee. We've had an advance draft released of the RFP, and we know that to be competitive, we probably need $95,000. So, with the county, with the county's $20,000 and the city's $80,000, that would give us $100,000. We would get through the door, we might even be competitive, and if we're lucky, we might actually win. And we'd be finally through all this frustration and struggle to get financing and complete our housing. I'm also asking today for a forward commitment of your fiscal year 2016 ship funds. Those should be approximately $80,000 as well. Ship hasn't been funded for quite a few years. This is the first year that ship has started to flow again since the Great Recession. So, but it's reasonable to consider, or to believe that you'll get $80,000 next, next year as well. Ship is released as part of the Florida Legislative Session in the spring for a fiscal year beginning July 1. This year, the county's allocation was The $80,000 of the cities makes a total distribution to this county of $772,000. The county administers the ship dollars. When ship was, was conceived of in the 1990s, that seemed like the most efficient way to distribute those funds. So, I'm asking the City Council to ask the county to use your $80,000 to add to their $20,000 to give us $100,000 for our application. I think it's important to share with you the struggles we've had getting the financing for this project. There are so many misconceptions about a housing authority. As our Board Commissioner pointed out, people think that we only serve Punta Gorda. We, our jurisdiction is all of Charlotte County, so any eligible low-income household can apply and receive our housing subsidies and our housing benefits. Also, people seem to think that we are actually the local HUD office, and that HUD provides all of our needs. That's the furthest from the truth. In fact, a, the Housing Authority is a corporate body politic. It's actually a special district created under a state enabling act by the City of Punta Gorda in 1965. The City of Punta Gorda was very forward-thinking, recognized the great need for affordable rental housing. So, they created us and provided the land, and HUD provided the funding to ultimately build 184 public housing units. A housing authority, then, simply has a contract with HUD to manage and operate those public housing units. They're much like any other private vendor that might have a federal contract with a federal agency. We lost 154 of those original units in Hurricane Charlie. And unfortunately, the federal government no longer supports housing the way it did in the 60s and 70s. They will not provide 100% of the funds to rebuild. HUD will provide some small grants, they'll total maybe 15% of a construction budget. But then that leaves the housing authority struggling to figure out how to fill this financial gap, this huge financial gap. We cannot go out and get a big loan for that gap. A big loan requires large mortgage payments. Large mortgage payments require that we have high rents in order to create revenue for that debt, and we can't charge high rents. By our contract with HUD, our rents have to be affordable to the low-income families that we serve. So, that leaves us with options such as additional federal grants, additional state grants, local contributions, tax credits. Tax credits are about the only way for a housing authority to achieve a successful financial package. And the catch is, the tax credits are in very short supply, and in order to compete for those and win those, you have to have a large local contribution. Tax credits are tax write-offs for corporate investors over a period of 10 or 15 years who choose to participate in an affordable housing project. The, the tax credits are allocated by the U.S. Treasury, and they limit those allocations. They don't want to lose all their revenue, obviously. They distribute it to each state based on population, and then the state has to come up with an application and rules for discerning between applicants. It's very, very competitive, and the Punta Gorda Housing Authority has struggled to compete. We're competing with Tallahassee, Miami, Orlando, Sarasota, Fort Myers, much bigger, wealthier communities than ours. They have resources available to them that we don't have. They have large amounts of CDBG. We don't have large amounts of CDBG. The county can apply for small-city CDBG, and we have pursued that option. But, after much discussion at the state level, the state level, the state determined that our project was not eligible because our property was in the city limits. I argued the point, pointing out that our jurisdiction was all of Charlotte County, and we served all eligible families in the county, but I lost that argument. We also can't tap into HOPE-6 dollars, which many of our larger competitors tap into. HOPE-6 is restricted to larger communities that have blighted areas or deep areas of poverty. So, it brings us back to the only logical, the only local contribution available is ship. Ship was suspended during the Great Recession, so it was very hard for us to even submit an application. We are very grateful that the county managed somehow to hang on to $75,000 of ship funds from several years ago, the last allocation year, so that we could continue to apply for tax credits. We applied many, many times, and we finally did get that tax credit award that we're using to build Phase One. We are very, very grateful for the county managing to hang on to that funds, those funds. I know it wasn't easy. We actually had a million dollars in ship funds for Gulf Breeze Apartments. We were blessed, of course, after the hurricane, with millions of extra dollars coming into this area. And that project was built quickly and occupied in 2008, and it received a national award in 2009. But we have one final phase to build before we can say we've replaced the senior housing we lost, and we need your support of that project. It is a very worthwhile project. It will generate and leverage $7 million in investor equity dollars. It will also generate more than $2 million in housing subsidies from HUD over the first five years alone. It will create 60 units of affordable senior housing, not just once, but in perpetuity. And it will create more than 100 jobs during the construction phase. It's a very worthwhile and needed project.
Lorraine, thank you. I think you've made your case.
Thank you.
I think you've made a very good case.
We're asking for this $160,000, not in substitution of what the county has committed in, already, but in addition to. The county's committed $20,000 for Phase Two, and they've already committed $75,000 for Phase One. So, we're asking for your $160,000 in addition to those funds.
We're looking at $80,000, I thought, that we have.
I'm also asking for a forward request of your fiscal year 2016 ship dollars.
Currently, can you clarify, because at the, was it the last meeting or two meetings ago, we did talk about our ship funds and allowing the county to make the decision about how they would be used for low-cost housing. Do we know where that is at this point in time?
Per our inter-local agreement, we can recommend to the county, as council, can recommend to the county how we use ship funding.
Okay.
I would like to recommend that we use it for Phase Two.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Tom.
What's the status of the, the property on Reddit that the Housing Authority owns? Is that property for sale?
On Marion Avenue?
Yes, on Marion.
It's for sale. We would love for the county to buy it for extra parking. We think it'd be a great addition to the Justice Center.
So, if, if that sale happened, funding would become available?
Oh, that would just be like phenomenal. We would be building, yes.
Is it just price that's holding back the, the sale of the property?
Well, the, certainly, at the time we finally got disposition from HUD, we entered the Great Recession and the market kind of just tanked. I don't believe it's price. HUD, HUD, we've gone through a very lengthy process with HUD, and we have a list price on it. But if we get an offer for less than that, I can take it through HUD, and they will look at it and, and work with us to sell that property.
Because the, the sale of that property would certainly free up the money then to finance Phase Two. When looking at your plans, there's, there's a significant economy of scale in building Phase One and Phase Two at the same time, because they're.
Well, we've missed that opportunity, unfortunately, and you're right. There would have been a phenomenal economy of scale. It would have made our tax applications much more competitive with our larger neighbors, because they had economies of scale in their larger projects. That was another catch-22 for us, unfortunately. Florida Housing Finance Corporation determined that Charlotte County was too small, that the second-oldest county in the country could not absorb 120 units of senior housing all at once. So, we were forced to divide it into two 60-unit developments, which is very painful, looking for financing twice. We would have preferred to do it in one phase. But we've, we've already missed that opportunity.
We have a recommendation from Kim. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I have a question. Howard, do you know what the county was planning to do with the balance of those funds for 2015?
David Hilson, Urban Design Manager, my discussions with Mr. Hebert at the county, who's in charge, he did have an item preparing itself to run through the Board of County Commissioners with certain commitments from the 2015. But I think if we sit down and talk, we can make things move around and make it work, so.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve recommending to the county to utilize the $80,000 this year for the program, the senior housing program.
And next year.
Is there a second on the next year as well?
Sure.
Okay.
At 2016, you're talking?
2015 and 2016 ship funds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So, we will then proceed with a letter to the county. Is that how we would move on next steps?
We'll communicate. Our Urban Design Manager will communicate with us.
Okay. Are we, are we set on that then, right?
He's chatting.
I, I noticed.
He'll communicate.
We're anticipating that you will communicate that this has been approved by the city to move forward with 2015 and 2016 funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, where are we? I think we have completed all of our regular agenda items. Moving on to recommendation from city officers, our city manager.
I did. Forgot to write it down. Two items for the next council agenda. I think we'll, either that or the second meeting in December. We're going to try and get it on the first meeting in December. Approval, review and approval of our business development plan for our strategic, part of our strategic plan. We already got comments back from the Punta Gorda Chamber Business and Economic Development Group. And then, we're also going to bring to you the proposal from the Visual Arts Center regarding development of a web portal.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all we got.
City attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
City clerk?
Under boards and committees, we just have three vacancies. An unexpired term as an alternate on the code enforcement board, a three-year term as an alternate on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and an unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, we have anyone that's interested, and I think we promote that with our weekly reports to encourage people to sign up, or at least submit their applications.
Well, just a comment.
Yes, Nancy.
I think at the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think we had a number of candidates for a previous position, so if we can go back and let all the previous candidates know that there is a position.
We do always. Good. Include them, yes. Make sure they're still interested, and then we include them. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I have a comment. I've heard from some of the applicants that they, if they had known that they had an opportunity to speak to city council and advertise their interest in, in a position, they would have shown up and stated so. I'm wondering if we might not want to consider putting something on the application, and I had this discussion with Karen, making them aware that they have the opportunity to come and speak at council, and perhaps even encouraging them to do so.
I, I like that idea, and perhaps when their nomination comes up, you know, at council, that they would be here to introduce themselves, and maybe we can encourage them to, to come.
I have taken liberty of revising the form and suggesting that they come to the council meeting during the nomination process to introduce themselves, and that they should monitor the city's website, the agenda on the website, for their name being nominated.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you. Under policy and legislation, a couple of things. On Monday, November 24th, I will be attending Senator Benequisto's open house in Fort Myers. I didn't know whether any of the rest, any of the rest of you were interested.
I'd like to go.
I'll be in Colorado.
Well, maybe. Okay, so, we might want to carpool.
That'd be great.
If that would be amenable to everyone, okay, we could discuss that later. I've also talked with Karen about perhaps looking at a rotation of our responsibilities during events. There are so many events that we are all invited to, and I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I often feel guilty if I can't attend everything. And usually, there are conflicts because of other events, or maybe family commitments, other obligations. And, of course, there will always be events that we all want to go to, or that you personally want to go to, and, you know, whether or not you were on council. So, I'm not saying that we don't do that, but maybe a rotation we could consider so that the council is represented at the events, but that we don't all have to feel obligated to attend. And Karen and I were trying to determine how we could possibly do that. She could keep the calendars similar to what she has been doing, but she also needs to have feedback from us if we are planning to attend. And then, our, our suggestion in terms of what would be a priority to make sure that council is represented, obviously proclamations. We're invited to do a proclamation, and, and sometimes one or more of us are invited to do that particular thing. If you can't do it, the next person in the rotation would be asked to do it. I think another priority would be ribbon cuttings for new businesses. But again, that would be on a rotation basis. If you want to go, please do. But at least we know that there will be one person that will be there from council. Does that sound reasonable? Nancy?
Yeah, it sounds reasonable. I noticed that some of the ribbon cuttings are, they're not businesses located either within city limits, or at least nearby, that they were considered to be Punta Gorda. So, we might want to use some judgment there, because some of the businesses, the ribbon cuttings in, on Peachland somewhere, and it, is that really part of, part of what we should, we need to feel obligated to do?
Right, and I think, again, I think that's.
It's a question.
I, I would agree. Yes, Rachel?
Historically, I think my time here, what has happened is the, they always want the mayor. The people want the mayor. And then if the mayor can't take on the responsibility, then it goes to the vice mayor. Then if the vice mayor can't take on the responsibility, then it goes, shifts down, and somebody picks it up and, you know, runs with it. So, I mean, that's historically how it's been. Are you saying that we want to change that up somehow?
No, I think that that will continue to happen, but there are some things, like all of the ribbon cuttings that we get invited to. I mean, it doesn't have to be the mayor or the vice mayor. If there's a particular business that you have shopped at and you want to promote, it might be, you know, a friend of yours. You may be the person that represents the council at that particular ribbon cutting.
I mean, I think we're consistently attending a lot of things. I don't know that there's an issue, but.
I just don't feel that we should all feel obligated. I guess I have felt guilty if I don't attend so many of the things. I don't know. Kim?
I know what you're saying. I kind of got over that a little bit, because it's, you can't go to everything. But I'm almost wondering, like, I know, you know, the Historic Preservation is having something, I saw, and it is helpful when, when you will say, "I'm going, I'm going," because I knew I, I was going to go to that, you know, that's. But is there a way on the computer, when we're accepting those invitations, if perhaps on that particular one, if it's maybe highlighted in red, it means no one's accepted it? When we look on the calendar, there's some way, so we could say, "Oh, no one's accepted that." I'll, you know, maybe I can rearrange my schedule and go to that, or?
See, that's where I think a rotation, if it, if it lands in our priority area.
Right, well, I, I think it's a good point, because I went to the ribbon cutting for the downtown fishing.
Bait and tackle.
Bait and tackle, thank you, and happened to be the only council member there. And so, John Wright asked me, "Are you going to the Havana Tranquility ribbon cutting?" And I said, "Well, I'd thought about it," and he says, "Please come," because he wanted somebody there. So, I went to it, and I was the only council member there. He was very happy to have somebody from council there. And I think it's that kind of thing where the, you know, really would like, appreciate the participation, just to ensure that there's someone there. And like you say, like, on the December 2nd, I've got four different things at the same time, so you can't possibly go to everything.
Yeah, right.
But in the case of Havana Tranquility, they're not in the city limits, so.
They're not.
I mean, would that be one that we would be on the list, off the list? I mean.
It's a good, I, yeah, you're right. That's one of those where.
I mean, are we going to be discreet with this? I mean, how are we going to hash that out, and?
In my, in my view, there are a lot of people that even though they may not be within the city limits, they're Punta Gorda, and they see themselves as Punta Gorda.
Right.
And so, it's, are they even within a proximity of, of Punta Gorda? Then maybe we should be there just because they think they're Punta Gorda.
Right.
Tom?
Well, I like the idea of indicating in, in red that nobody has indicated a preference or that they would attend, so, you know, we can take a look at that and maybe jump in. I, a lot of these ribbon cuttings, I decided at the last minute whether I can make it, or whether I can't make it, or whether I want to go, or not, so I, and I don't know that we, I don't know about the rotation concept. We, we spoke about that once before at a, at a council meeting, and we, we decided not.
Yeah, it never really took hold.
I'm not so comfortable with that again now.
Well, maybe the discussion, then, is that we shouldn't feel guilty if we can't attend every single event.
Well, we can't.
Right.
There's no way.
We can, and so perhaps, again, with Karen's help, we can identify those that perhaps someone should be at, particularly if it's a new business in town, or even if a new business has moved. You know, some of those kinds of things we would definitely want to be at. And of course, there are other, so many other events that we get invited to other than ribbon cuttings.
Well, you're going to get bombarded with invitations, so just be ready for it.
I'm sure.
It's going to happen.
I have no desire, I mean, my desire would be to spread the wealth, so you can be expecting to get invited.
I mean, as long as we know, typically what I do, I will accept, if I know I can't, no way, then I'll decline. But if, if I might be available, you know, something doesn't run late, I'll put it on my calendar. But if I know, I always accept. That way, it's there, and I know if I have the time to get there, I always get there. But if I knew that nobody was going, and it was, you know, it's a new business, I mean, I always want to support our businesses, so I would, I would know I was the one that was going to be there, because, so if I knew that no one else was going to something. Now, that doesn't mean I might be able to go, but if I could, I would definitely make other arrangements if I could.
Well, the response is accept, decline, and then also tentative.
Right.
So, maybe if you think it's a tentative, definitely indicate a tentative, so that, that would give Karen information.
The heads up, yeah.
The, the problem is that you can't see each other's calendars.
Right.
So, if you, if, if no, and it would be kind of a tracking nightmare to try to keep track of, of who's attending and who's not if you're not accepting or declining. If you're going to accept or decline, in order to let you know, I have to edit that event and send it to you again, so that means more emails for you. I can do it that way. We can, if we did the rotation, my idea was that, similar to the proclamations, if, if you're on the rotation, then when I send out the invite, I can say, "Council member Divine will attend this event." But if you can't, then I know to go to the next person on the rotation, but it would be, already be on the invite when you were. it would already be on the invite when you receive, but you would see who was assigned to attend. If you wanted to attend those events, like the mayor said, there are things that you're all going to want to go to. So if you wanted to go, just because council member Divine was the next person on the list, doesn't mean you can't go, but you would still be in the rotation, even if you went. You'd still be on the rotation to go to the next event if it was your turn. So I think the rotation could work, but you can still go, but at least then we're assured that the one person can go. And I, then, and just to clarify, the proclamations, we're going to continue with those as we have, where generally, I mean, 99% of the time, they're going to ask the mayor. So we would only switch that out if you're not able to go, and then that would fall to Kim next, and then so on.
Sounds good. Okay. Can we try it out and see how that works, and then if we find that, again, or if Karen finds it is an absolute organizational nightmare, she'll surely let us know.
I just don't know how, where is the list going to be determined of what this, what's going to get into the rotation? Where's the criteria of what gets into the rotation?
We had talked about new businesses rather than new chamber members. And also, if a business was opening a new location in the city, if they were moving, but it was a new location for them, maybe they should be a priority as well. But for those businesses who have been open for, you know, a number of years, and the only reason there's ribbon cutting is because that's a benefit of their becoming a chamber member, then those, then no.
And you would know that by their application for their local business tax? Is that how you...
I usually know when I get...
I mean, as long as we have some criteria. And then, you know, the Havana Tranquility, where would that fall?
They were new.
They were new, but, okay, and they were close by OTB.
Well, I'll give you another one.
The way we've done that in the past is that if they were a Punta Gorda chamber member, then they were included in our ribbon cuttings. And if they were a Charlotte County chamber member but located in the city limits, then we include those ribbon cuttings. So that's kind of how we defined it. It was the Punta Gorda chamber member regardless of where they were located, so they could have been up in Port Charlotte, but...
Okay. Because I see that there's also a ribbon cutting for KB Homes on Jones Loop Road. It's a new development that's going in. It's a very lovely development. It just happens to, it's out Jones Loop Road, past Taylor.
Did they not have a ribbon cutting Creekside?
No, it's brand new.
Really?
Creekside, something other.
No, it's brand new. This is on Jones Loop Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I read about it, and then I said, "Where is this?" And so I actually went out and drove there just to see where it was. And it's lovely, it's in the woods, and...
Was it their new model home? Is that what that was for?
All right, so do you have kind of direction?
Okay.
Yes?
I'm enjoying my free time, so I'm not really wanting to be in the rotation, but...
It's only fifth, only every fifth one. Okay, we'll try that.
Well, if you can't make it, then, you know, you just can't make that one. It's really basically the same, it's just a little bit more organized.
Okay, the other, we can move on then. I did want to mention the food drive that our employees are doing on behalf of the Charlotte County Homeless Coalition. There are boxes around, so if anyone has cans, goods, or other kinds of things that we can incorporate, that would be helpful. I also wanted to share with you that during an event this past year, dignitaries from France came to the military museum, well, actually it wasn't through the military museum, but they were recognizing Jean-François Baranski for his military service in France, but they were giving him special medals and things like that. But at the same time, they brought over an antique French flag and donated it to our Heritage Military Museum. And so our museum then reciprocated and gave a flag to them to take back to France. And Jean-François and his wife brought me back pictures of our flag in Paris, where our flag is now, and they have been just so thrilled, and everyone in Paris and France are pleased to have a flag from Punta Gorda's Military Heritage Museum. So I just thought that was really, really very, very nice, very nice. And that is all I have. Nancy, do you want to begin?
Sure. I would like to congratulate Joe King, who won the comedy with a cause on Saturday. He did a hilariously good job and represented Punta Gorda well, and so congratulations to him. And I need to email you what is the RPC, the Regional Planning Council, what they're considering for a legislative. I've reviewed it all. It's lengthy, and it's really just a lot of what other people have submitted. So it's really, just for enough information, I'll send it to you. But it's like almost 100 pages worth of information. It's a lot. And the other thing is that happy Thanksgiving.
That's right, yes. Kim?
Okay, I've got a couple things. First, I wanted to say the Kenton Pool bid. I agree with Howard. Both of those vendors were excellent vendors. If we want to change the policy, we should talk, if that's something we wanted to do. I just didn't want to change, you know, hold up the project, redo the whole thing. So, I mean, if it is something we want to talk about, we should talk about that at some point. Also, on our 1% sales tax, we did, there was a picture of a sailing center, and this is something I wanted to know if you guys would be interested in. I took a trip over to Jensen Beach, Florida, and they have a U.S. Sailing Center there, and it's on county property. They rent it. I have some information on that. I'll send it. You guys have the pictures, but I have a, you know, a narrative of that. And it is a beautiful, beautiful center. And I know we're not going to start our activity center until later because of the, you know, the leases and stuff. But I kind of would like to encourage the Y to really focus more on the sailing center at the Bayfront Center. I mean, our area, our harbor is our biggest asset, and this sailing center over there, it's a perfect, it's the same size community we are. It's right next door to Port St. Lucie, which is the same size community as Port Charlotte. They have, I'll just give you a couple things. They have, they do regattas. They have six or seven regattas a year. They make about $70,000. They have membership levels where it's like a membership is $395 for a membership for a year. That includes unlimited, they have Hobie Cats, and I have a list of all the boats and stuff they have. But they, and this guy has never gotten any type of grants at all. There's one guy that runs the place, and then everything else, when they have these regattas, but they bring up to, in their regattas, they have anywhere from 80 to 300 boats. And these people stay all night. I mean, they're very supported by their tourism, because they bring so many overnight stays, weekend stays. And I think that if we could encourage the Y to try to step it up there and create that program with what we have there now, that when we're ready to build that activity center, we could really, you know, see, see what's going, you know, what's going. This is the center.
This is the center. It just looks nice. Is this something that the Voters Alliance should help to pursue? I mean, this would be, I mean, this fits right in with what you're trying to do. But this would be something that we really could do.
Right.
You haven't had a chance to talk to the Y people yet?
No, no. I've talked to Howard about it and talked about having the Y come in, but I just wanted to make sure, I mean, my focus, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. I mean, I just see it as such a wonderful thing for our community, because it's overnight, and it's not just kids' regattas. I mean, now we, next year, Brian Gleason is bringing that regatta here. You know, that's what I, when I think of a boating community, that's what I think of. And I'm involved in the, when the Y has regattas, I go and help out. And we have people who come from Davis Island. They love, they can't believe our location. The parents just love the fact that they can be right there and see their kids sail, and they can't see that in Tampa when they have their regattas there. They love our facility. Matter of fact, Coach Jane is the one who told me about Jensen Beach, and said, "Go to Jensen Beach." And economically, I mean, they don't lose money, and they, but, but the economic impact for the community is huge. And they're carrying their own, and they, you know, so, and they, they could do much, much more, really.
Well, and there would be really nice synergy between the Y then and the boat club.
Right.
You know, in terms of really supporting each other, and they're right there next to each other. Did you have time in?
Yeah, this building looks like it fits and belongs right here in Punta Gorda. I mean, it resembles like the Crab House and the other buildings that we already have. I really like it a lot.
And it's not, I wish, I only had my phone, so I didn't really have a camera, but you, you can't see any, this is kind of at the end of some, at the end of a road, so it's not really around a community. But, you know, I could see that really, instead of on the point, like is kind of planned, being maybe up closer. But it's all filled in with plants and secret, you can't see anything behind. But behind this, behind it, you can see the top picture on the left. That's the back of it. So you see how neat and clean it is. And underneath, they have a place where they repair the boats, and then they store, they have paddle boards. You can just go grab a paddle board, and, you know, if you have a membership, you just sign it out. And like I said, they're the same size community, and they have one, you know, one guy there. And then they have all these classrooms. They have 450 kids every summer in their camp, for sailing camp.
And it sounds like a perfect venue again for the Y.
I know, exactly. So...
Tom, did you have comments?
I am so supportive of anything that promotes sailing on our harbor, but I must tell you, I am terribly disappointed in what the Y has done so far. You know, they, we'll leave it at that for now.
Well, that's why I thought maybe, that's why I wanted to bring this up. Maybe we need to redirect their energy and say, "This is what we would like to see."
They have a lease renewal coming up shortly, and we may want to, you know, we had certain commitments were presented to council when they, when they were given a lease to begin with, and they have not been met. We have time to have a conversation with them.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring this up today. I have one more, I was just on a comment, and that was, that was, what you're doing is setting the stage for when we plan what we need, and I think to build the demand is, the timing is perfect. That's what I, I would like to just let you know, yesterday at Drug Free Punta Gorda, officers Captain Lewis, Jeff Woodard, Tony Priville, and Joe Angelini did a presentation. And they could, they could be on TV. It was so good, and they represented our community so well. And it was kind of a spur of the moment. They really weren't planning on doing it. Joe King was supposed to do it, so they kind of filled in, and just didn't miss a beat, and really, really did such a great job.
That's great. Sorry there was a conflict with that one.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. Tom?
Yeah, I just would like to let everybody know that I received a copy of the cost and feasibility study on Alligator Creek Cut. I got that from the Voters Alliance. Should have gone to you as the voters liaison to the Voters Alliance.
Would you like to take that responsibility over?
I'd be pleased, sure.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that the Voters Alliance will make a presentation at some point and let us all know what's going on.
Sounds good.
And that's it. I just wish everybody a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving.
Rachel?
Yes, went to Orlando last week and met with my Energy and Natural Resource Committee, and we're functioning, it was a very well-functioning group of like 60 people, which is kind of unwieldy, but it was fine. I thought it was good. They heard, you know, the story of Punta Gorda, and they were receptive. And I, the final policy statements, I think, have to be approved by the board, and then they will be published for all the different committees. So as soon as I get all that, I'll copy you on it. And it's almost Thanksgiving, and after the last council meeting, several people reached out to me, and it meant a lot. So thank you. That's it.
Well, thank you. I don't have any other business, any other business to come before? Public comments?
Jay Buckley, Voters Alliance. First, I'd like to say, I have a suggestion. You were talking about parking for the Western Michigan project. You could accelerate the boating activity center, which would accommodate two things, possibly the sailing center and some parking that might accommodate the college. The other suggestion would be, you know, we have two trolleys. We could have a parking area someplace with regular transportation between the school and their cars. And this happens all the time around cities that don't have a lot of parking for their schools. On the sailing, or the YMCA, we're working very hard. I'm also on the advisory board there, and I have to say, while we had good attendance for numbers of children going through the program, it's still a fractional, it has been a fractional operation. I think one thing that's, we're holding over our head that I have to keep reminding the folks, they've got some great plans, but I have to keep reminding them that their lease comes due, I think it's February. And maybe Councilman Kavanaugh has a better handle on when exactly that lease is up. I don't. But I know it's January, February, March, whatever, pretty soon. They need, I think they're afraid, they're sitting there waiting, afraid that they may not get their lease renewed. We've already, I'm, I volunteered to, we're trying to get adults and older children involved as well. And I'm preparing to meet with Doug Whitaker, that is, if he keeps his job. I'd like to get a high school program going in the schools. That was turned down some time back because they felt there was a liability they did not want to assume. I'm going to readdress that, because Mr. Whitaker was not the superintendent at the time that it was turned down. We also have some, we're looking at some different boats for adult classes. And I think we can, I think the program has started now that we can really go someplace. If they could get some kind of a commitment with stipulations, that they are going to get their lease renewed. On the cut through, I sent out a letter, of course, we had a lot of private donors, and those people paid for the engineering study that Councilman Kavanaugh has now. It had, we would probably had, we've had our meetings, the engineer came up, explained his studies, 42 pages, very thorough. And he gave option A, option B for the locations. Couple of guys on the committee said they'd also like to see an option C, which we had talked about months back, but we did not challenge the engineer to pursue that one. Now he's going to give us an estimate to go back, and he'll do some study on that option. That's why there's been a delay of anything to show you folks. He is fully prepared. He is going to prepare the PowerPoint presentations that you'll see. His recommendation is that he makes three, one for city government, one that we'll use to show the DEP, FWC, all the permitting folks, and then one for the public. But I'll have to say now, the Alliance feels very strongly that they raised the money to pay for all this, and the study belongs to them, and they feel they should see, their directors and alternates should see this first. And that's what we plan to do. So I don't hold a lot of hope in this option C, because it involves a whole lot more judging, a whole lot more mangroves. It'd be very expensive and very time-consuming. So I let, rest assured, we are working very hard on it, and we'll update as soon as we decide what the, which option is going to be, we'll come to you with a presentation.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Just a point that we, you know, since I've been given a copy of that, it is in the public domain, and if I'm asked to show a copy or present, provide a copy of that, I'll be...
Well, yeah, I, the only thing I would say is that that's really not the final product. As, I feel very strongly... As, I feel very strongly, and the engineer recommends option B on that study that you have. And how the rest of the committee is gonna feel, I don't know. I mean, it was, it was only, there were only two folks that wanted that option C pursued. The engineer feels very strongly that permitting-wise, time-wise, cost-wise, everything, option B is our best shot. So, we'll...
City council has absolutely no idea.
Yeah, in terms of, since the rest of us haven't seen it. So, why don't we just assume that this is a draft, which I assume it is?
It is, it's just a draft.
It's not the final report. And we'll wait to hear from...
The final report will be in the PowerPoint presentation.
Sounds good.
That will answer the questions. There are a lot of rumors out there, a lot of questions and so forth. So, that's gonna be the best thing.
Thank you, Jay.
Well, I would like a copy even though it's not, I mean, because I don't have any idea what it's...
We would prefer that the draft not be distributed.
Well, see, that's, I think that's the point that we were trying to make. Is that you can call it a draft and you, if you want to supplement the, what you've submitted with a cover letter saying this is a draft, that's fine. But it is a public record and it has to be disseminated now. If anyone requests it.
So, the covering, who's gonna read?
I'll make a copy for everybody as soon as I get it.
Okay, and then you'll write the cover letter that it is a draft.
It is a draft. As soon as I get it, we'll hand it out.
Got you, okay.
Thank you, Jay.
Can I, can I just make a suggestion, Jay?
Yes.
I think, I recall that you had indicated you were gonna be taking this PowerPoint around to the community and showing it to the different boating clubs and so on. If I could make a suggestion that you do a presentation to council initially, before you do that, and have, if council chooses to pass that proposal back to staff for their comments, that they, that may be helpful prior to you going out into the community and, you know, drawing up support or, you know, whatever is gonna come out of it.
And I understand that, but the presentation that you folks see is not gonna be the same presentation that the public's gonna see. In other words, you're, you're, you're gonna be, the engineer's suggestion is that you get engineering-type information, that you, you know, all the facts so that for you to make a decision that you may have to make in the future, the public is not gonna really worry about that type of stuff. We're gonna make one probably that'll give advantages, disadvantages, et cetera, you know, that the boating public will be interested in.
Jay, I think what Councilmember Kavanaugh is trying to suggest is that it not go any further than council until we've had a chance to review it, until our staff has had a chance to review it and give you feedback, give feedback to the Boaters Alliance on it before it goes out. I believe that's your recommendation. So, does that, is that clear? Because what we're concerned about, or what I would be concerned about, is that once it gets out there, the rumors start going, people go yay, nay, or whatever, clashes in the community. And it probably will be unnecessary if it is going to move along at some...
The only thing, it would be an agenda item, correct? Soon as it hits as an agenda item, this room is gonna be covered over. This room is not gonna be big enough for the attendance.
Well, maybe we'll move, move that meeting then to...
To the Civic Association building or something.
Civic Association or to another venue, yes.
Because there's an awful lot of people out there.
We understand. We understand. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Gene Palowski is a citizen. Yes, I did bring this cold weather from Wisconsin yesterday.
How did you do that?
Well, it'd be interesting to know that I did not hit fifty degrees till I hit Tallahassee. And it was fifty when I arrived in Punta Gorda last night. As a loss control consultant and a safety engineer, I was a little bit, wanted to clue you in on thinking about the use of RETA for the impact site. As, and I think you have to look at the park across the street. The park there is very narrow. It's suitable largely for picnic tables and little shelters and so forth that support that. At the end of RETA is the cul-de-sac. And it widens out there so the cars may turn. And on that north side, it's not a problem to put diagonal parking in there, or angle, as some people would say. A gain could be made, since the park is very narrow there, you probably have a total of a hundred feet, or maybe a little bit more than that to some points, a hundred and twenty, that you could borrow ten or twenty foot from that park to come up with the diagonal parking on both sides of the roads, as Carolyn has suggested. It is very possible to do that between moving the fence a little bit and gaining a little bit on the north side of the road to come up with more, which would put you up in the range of a hundred and sixty parking spaces, which is a long way towards your goal. Frequently traveling from here down Shreve, because I live down that way, the problem is that we have a lot of traffic funneled off of RETA onto Shreve and then to the stop sign that Rachel is concerned about. And I, that's an escape route. Unless you make a connector into Fisherman's Village, you're funneling all that traffic into one spot. And I think it would not be beneficial to put parking at that particular point from a safety standpoint. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Appreciate it. Any other citizens' comments? Anything else for the good of the whole? Then I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy. And our meeting's adjourned.